Good afternoon, welcome to the May 4th meeting of the Phoenix City Council. I will call to order this policy session and we will begin with roll call.
Councilwoman Ansari. Councilwoman DeCecio. Councilwoman Guardado.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor. Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia. Mayor Gallego.
Here. Thank you all for joining us today. We'll begin today's meeting with council information updates and follow-up requests. Do any council members have any information to share? Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. As we know, District 5 continues to suffer the highest levels of COVID-19 exposure and the lowest rates of vaccination. For this reason, I am incredibly thankful for the efforts of St. Vincent de Paul Catholic School, as well as the Maricopa County Health Department, the University of Arizona's College of Public Health, and the incredible volunteers from the Valley Interfaith Project for bringing COVID vaccines directly to our community that live in the heart hit 85031. If you live in the 85031 zip code, Moderna vaccines will be available at St. Vincent de Paul Catholic Church at 3130 North 51st Avenue tomorrow, May 5th, as well as Wednesday, May 12 and Wednesday, May 19th. My team was out in the 85031 area this weekend with VIP volunteers reminding folks about this vaccine event. Residents were extremely grateful to have an opportunity so close to their homes. So again, if you live in this area, I encourage everyone to take advantage of this event. You can call 211, extension 271, to make your appointment today. Finally, this Friday, May 7th, the City Mobile Testing Band will be at the Fry's Food Store at 19th Avenue in Glendale from 7:15 to 1:15. For more COVID testing site information, please visit phoenix.gov/covidtesting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Do any other council members have updates? Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to share District 4 updates. I believe there's a PowerPoint. First of all, I'm happy to report that the signal that has been in works for years was finally activated last week. The traffic signal activation is on 45th Avenue and MacDell and was activated April 29th, 2021. As you can see on this slide, the Sit, Stay and Steal, our homeless dog shelter, is now open and it's getting lots of coverage, appearing on Yahoo News Global Cover page. I want to recognize our partners, Midwestern and Hump Capi Farms. I also want to thank the mayor for attending the open house on Saturday, and I also want to thank Michael Peterson and Corvial from my office for doing all the legwork and hard work. This past week, I did the first walkthrough of the new U.S. vets home, and it's going to be amazing. I'm excited that in addition to housing vets experiencing homelessness, they will also have two floors dedicated to providing new opportunities for affordable housing. Although I'm sad they will no longer be housed in District 4, I know the new facility will work well for them. We will be hosting our annual Memorial Day barbecue for the last time in District 4's location. If anyone wants to donate food or volunteer, please contact my office. Also, on Wednesday, May 12th, I will be welcoming 78-year-old running sensation Stan Cortel to Phoenix. Stan is running across the country for the third time. We will greet him at Encanto Park at 4:00 PM. Fun and celebration will follow. Today is Teachers' Day and this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so I want to take a moment to celebrate the amazing teachers in the city of Phoenix. And looking forward to the weekend, I want to also wish a very happy Mother's Day to everyone. As always, stay in the know with District 4 by following us on social media. On Twitter, look at @PhoenixDistrict4 and join the conversation. Thank you, Mayor. Those are all my updates.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any additional council members have updates to share?
And Councilwoman Pastor, I want to thank you for the wonderful invitation to join you at the ribbon cutting for Sit, Stay, Heal Dog Hotel. It was a really inspiring event and a great facility. My son did want to know if his dog could move in there because it seemed like a great place to be a dog, but I would think anyone would feel comfortable with their pet staying there and just a good excuse to visit as well. So thank you for your leadership in overcoming that barrier to housing. I also join Councilwoman Guardado in saying thank you to St. Vincent de Paul and the team at Valley Interfaith Project who are doing that amazing effort to get folks vaccinated in the western portion of our city, including an ambitious campaign to go door-to-door and share accurate health information, which is so valuable. Those shots are the light at the end of the tunnel for us, and the more we can do to get them in arms, the better. And the majority of the council joined the airport for a very successful event. And if you are still looking to be vaccinated, a fun event that I would suggest is tomorrow's Cinco de Mayo event at the Phoenix Convention Center. Probably your best chance to have mariachis while you get vaccinated, and it'll be 11 to 8:00 PM at the Phoenix Convention Center South Building. Walk-ins are welcome, parking is free. Join us and have a memorable Cinco de Mayo. I also wanted to congratulate Matt Arve for winning the Public Sector Arizona Chief Information Officer Award at the ORBI Awards. Matt has served as Chief Information Officer for the city of Phoenix and will be leaving the city for the private sector next week. He's led us through very challenging times and accomplished many feats while in this role, including helping us go to more digital government during COVID-19. There could not have been a tougher time to be Chief Information Officer than during pandemic, and so we want to thank him for that leadership, as well as so many citywide projects that he has implemented. And Matt wishing you success in what you do next. Also want to recognize John Chan, who has been serving as our Acting Deputy City Manager. He has held so many leadership roles at the city and has worked very hard to make us a great place to live, work, and play. So we want to thank him again also for stepping up during a difficult time, and we are excited for him to continue his leadership at the Phoenix Convention Center. Any additional council member comments before I turn to our city manager? All right, Ed Zirker, we will turn to you. Thank you.
Mayor, I have no reports and budget updates today. I don't believe there's any consent, action, or a call for an executive session, so we would be ready for item number one when you are ready for that.
Wonderful. Then we will move to our proposed budget, and want to thank everyone who has been part of this project. I'm very proud of this proposed budget, and I'll turn it back to you to introduce it.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. So we are here today to present the proposed budget to you and the public for review. This is an important step in our process where we make an informational report two weeks before you take your first vote on the budget, which will be on May 18th, and that will allow us to continue to get input about what the city council would like to see in the budget. This follows up on input we've received over the past 45 days since the trial budget was released for comment. So I think if we just step back and look back over the past year's challenges, it is remarkable to think where we stand today with one of the best opportunities for adding community services in the last 20 years. And this is due to the hard decisions that the mayor and city council have made over the last 14 months, using coronavirus relief funds strategically and the city's own dollars. And so I just want to take a moment to recognize how important the mayor and city council's effort and leadership has been in bringing the city to this remarkable place where we can respond to several critical and emerging needs. What this means is that we have resources to address employee compensation and strengthen programs for the community. Some of them have been years in the making, like the Tree in Shade program and the Crisis Response Program and Victim Advocate that were proposed three years ago by the Traumatic Incident Ad Hoc Committee, the Cesar Chavez Community Center, which has been, the mayor will remember, seven or eight years in the making, and Dean Hills Park, which has been a long time coming. Some have been requested over a long period of time from the community, like the Park at Samantha Way, arts funding, College Depot, Historic Preservation, and Pueblo Grande. Many are a result of the mayor and city council's adopted strategies in climate, affordable housing, homelessness, and water conservation, and others respond to more immediate issues like diversity, equity, and inclusion, or COVID. So adopting a budget is critical because it sets the path forward. It allows us to build programs knowing that there is an assured funding strategy, and it provides the spending authority necessary for things like the American Recovery Plan Act funds that we will receive this year to provide even more services to the community. Now I'll turn it over to our staff, Jeff Barton, Assistant City Manager, and Amber Williamson, Budget and Research Director, and I just want to commend Amber in her first year as Budget Director and her staff for the work they did during COVID to put this together, put the budget hearings together. So really great work by our Budget and Research staff, and that's a compliment to Jeff Barton, who led that group for so many years. And with that, I will turn it to Assistant City Manager Jeff Barton.
Thank you, Ed. Mayor, members of the council, again, I want to echo everything that the city manager said. We would not be in this place today, in this position, without your strong leadership and direction. So we are excited to be here today to talk to you about our budget, our proposal. It's structurally balanced, as you know, which means our resources and our expenditures are in line with one another, not just for this fiscal year, but also for the next four years, next five years, based on our five-year forecast. We are in a good position. We've got a surplus, meaning that we have additional resources that we can address the community needs as well as other needs. You have long said that one of the biggest resources the city has is its city employees, and this budget reflects that with the compensation increases that we have agreed to with our bargaining units. We also, as Ed mentioned a few, and Amber will go into more detail, this budget reflects a significant investment in city programs and services. Some of those programs and services, as Ed mentioned, have been talked about and discussed for multiple years, and we just haven't had the resources to address them. So it's really exciting that we're actually in this place and that we can address them today. Again, we've had 14 community budget hearings over the past few weeks, and again, this budget that we're proposing today does differ from the trial budget that the community spoke out about. And again, that is based on the feedback that we heard at our community budget hearings. So as a high level, our resources are $1.6 billion in the general fund, and our expenditures are $1.6 billion. Again, as you all know, we have to have a balanced budget by both state charter and by state statute and city charter. We do have $153 million surplus in the general fund. We've emphasized over and over that that is consisting of $98 million in one-time resources and $55 million in ongoing resources. It's very important that we structure our budget to reflect that so that we can ensure that structural balance maintains through the duration of our five-year forecast. We did, based on the hard work of Budget and Research Department and Amber leading that team, did identify an additional $1.8 million in additional resources based on our eight-plus-four revenue reviews. That's where we have eight months' worth of actuals, and we are projecting for the remaining four months of this year and then looking at how that impacts next year's forecast. As a result of that work, we've identified $1.8 million in additional resources. So again, our revised surplus has now been revised upwards by that 1.8, so we're now sitting with a surplus of $154.8 million. And Amber will walk us through now what we plan to do with that additional resource.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Ed. Mayor, members of the council, and the community who is listening. Before I get into discussing the changes to the proposed budget, I'd like to talk a moment about community feedback. So during the month of April, we held 14 virtual community budget hearings between April 2nd and April 20th. We also updated our Fund Phoenix online budget tool. That included proposed changes to the trial budget, and we also received comments directly from the public through email and voicemail to the Budget Research Department. What we heard overall is strong support for the trial budget additions, particularly in the areas of heat mitigation, affordable housing, additional funds for homelessness, for the arts, historic preservation, workforce development, additional resources for street maintenance, and program additions for parks and libraries. Out of the 1.6 million residents that call Phoenix their home, we heard 1,524 comments from 1,001 residents through April 27th. In addition, we also heard requests for input in the proposed bold expansion of the Community Assistance Program. This is $15 million in the proposed budget. This is the program that we are proposing to continue to provide crisis response, as well as response to mental and behavioral health calls for service with a civilian-trained model. The proposed CAP expansion includes involving the community and stakeholders, particularly from the behavioral and mental health field. The timeline for the expansion is 18 to 24 months. We do plan to engage third-party experts, particularly for help with program implementation, process mapping, developing policies and protocols, particularly for doing the triaging of calls in 911, as well as developing performance measures. We also will be doing a request for proposal for a third-party behavioral health provider or providers to work with staff to service the behavioral health units and get people connected to long-term care. This will be a civilian-only comprehensive service model, and the intent is to improve resident health outcomes and respond to calls for service with appropriate and trained civilian intervention. In addition, we also heard requests for more city parks, particularly in the southwest area of the city, maintenance of the High Line Canal, a dedicated position for veterans, additional funding for fast-track cities initiatives. We also heard many comments for reduced funding for police and some comments for increased funding for police. The proposed budget includes items, including the CAP expansion, to try to help relationships between police and the community. Also, we heard questions and requests for completion of streets projects, particularly the 3rd, 5th Avenue North in the Willow District, as well as the medians along Hidalgo Avenue. Also, comments to continue the Phoenix Biz Connect Hub platform. This was rolled out during the pandemic to help small businesses get connected to resources and to network. It is proposed to continue that using ARPA funds. And I would also like to mention that there's additional information about all of the feedback we received in the city council report that went out last Thursday, and that's on phoenix.gov's website. So now I'm going to go over at a high level the general fund proposed additions, which do include changes totaling the 1.8 million in additional resources. So first, we have employee compensation proposed increases of $118.3 million. For public safety reform and responsiveness, $20.5 million. Building community and responding to growth, $4.7 million. Administrative accountability, $3.1 million. Affordable housing and homelessness, $2.8 million. Climate change and heat readiness, $2.8 million. And COVID response and resiliency at $2.6 million, for total general fund additions of $154.8 million. Now I'll discuss the proposed general fund changes that total the 1.8 million. We are proposing to do a general fund set aside for six positions for three new parks that will be built during next fiscal year. We want to set aside the money for operations and maintenance of those parks. We do believe that those will be ready to be opened to the public in 2022, 2023, and we want to make sure that we have the resources to do that maintenance. The three parks are located at 55th Avenue and Samantha Way, 71st Avenue and Meadows, and 87th Avenue and Lower Buckeye. Construction and design of the parks will be paid for with available impact fees. Also proposed is $342,000 for four positions for maintenance of the High Line Canal and also to adequately maintain Phoenix historic cemeteries. Also, converting a temporary position, a museum assistant at Pueblo Grande Museum, to a permanent, ongoing, full-time city position, at $78,000. And then $250,000 for Fast Track Cities Initiatives. Two of our council members, Councilwoman Laura Pastor and Councilwoman Deborah Stark, are co-chairs of the Fast Track Cities Initiatives. This funding will be used to help get residents who are diagnosed with HIV and AIDS, 90% of them hopefully, connected to treatment, as well as to do educational and awareness campaigns. Also, proposed an additional position to serve as a Veterans Navigator at $95,000. This person or employee would work directly with our Phoenix residents who are veterans of the military to get them connected to services through the Veterans Administration for things like food or housing assistance, counseling, and even connection to medical services. Also proposed is increasing a position we had in the trial budget for affordable housing. It was a project manager. It's been determined that the duties of the position really require it to be at a higher level, a special projects administrator. This position is going to be dedicated towards achieving the goals of the Housing Phoenix Plan to create or sustain 50,000 additional affordable housing units by 2030. That cost increase is $45,000. And then lastly, a small increase of $5,000 to what was proposed in the trial budget of $25,000 for an increase to the Successful Adaptive Reuse Program in the Planning Department. That would take that funding to $30,000 next year. Total changes to the trial budget are 1.8 million. I'll briefly just talk about some non-general fund additions, as well as one change that we made from the trial budget. Our non-general funds include departments such as the Water Department, Aviation, and also our Solid Waste Fund. The proposed budget includes adding resources for the Development Services Fund, additional positions to conduct residential and commercial plan reviews. Also, for the Solid Waste Fund, due to increase in household growth as well as tonnage, they need solid waste equipment operators. And then for streets, for additional street maintenance, paid for by the Arizona Highway User Revenue Fund. And then the change from the trial budget is the addition of five positions, as recommended by the Water Conservation Ad Hoc Committee. They recommended 13 projects to be phased in over the next couple of years, and the Water Department is asking for five additional positions to do those projects. The next steps after today, May 18th, we'll be bringing back the proposed budget for council budget decision. On June 2nd, we are scheduled for tentative budget adoption. June 16th, final budget adoption. And then we wrap it up on July 1st with property tax adoption. And I do want to take just a moment to talk about property tax adoption scheduled for July 1st. It is proposed in the budget to decrease the combined property tax rate by one cent. And just as a side note, for every one cent change in property tax, that's a difference of about $1.5 million in property tax collections. The combined rate is proposed to drop to $2.12 from $2.13. The primary rate is maximized and would remain unchanged at $1.31. The secondary rate would drop to $0.81 from $0.82. And just as a reminder for council, our primary property taxes support our general fund programs and services, and the revenues are projected to increase in 21, 22 to $191.3 million, roughly $11 million or 4% higher than the current year, and that is due to increased property values or assessed value plus new construction. Our secondary property taxes are restricted to pay for voter-approved general obligation debt service. We are also required by state law to do a truth and taxation notice and hearing to the public. That is required any time an increase is proposed in primary property tax collections. That notice is not required, however, for secondary property tax. We are scheduled to do that truth and taxation notice and hearing at the City Council Forum and Leaning on June 16th, 2021. And that concludes our presentation, and we can answer any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you to Amber and the entire budget team. Thank you to the city council for quick action early on to put us in this position to have surplus and make these investments. It is exciting to be delivering additional services to our community, who certainly needs it, and we appreciate all the folks who have engaged in trying to produce better programs, including the mental and behavioral health professionals who've engaged with us on the CAP program, the Military Veterans Commission, who's helped us with the Veterans Navigator, as well as the Councilwoman and the Fast Track Cities Initiative, who have helped us with that addition. I am, last time focused my comments on the heat and CAP program, and today really want to recognize those five new additional positions on water conservation. We have great challenges on the Colorado River, although we have been preparing for them. Phoenix has a diverse water supply and a lot of investments to make sure we can continue to deliver water, but water conservation is incredibly important, and I'm really glad we're going to be making additional investments in that area, or at least that is what is proposed. I think these are smart investments that will help us recover from the challenges of 2020 and COVID-19, and it's a balanced budget that addresses this in an efficient and responsible way. Council comments?
Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first and foremost, I want to thank our city of Phoenix employees. They have worked through this past year with incredible commitment to our residents. I am glad to see our employees receiving a compensation in this proposed budget that reflects the efforts and sacrifices they have made. Secondly, I want to ensure that this upcoming budget includes its fair share for District 5 and the west side of our city. One of the main things I heard from my constituents, especially in our Maryvale community, is the need for increased and improved recreational amenities in our District 5 parks. I want to ask the city manager and city staff to make sure that this upcoming budget is responsive to those in need. We want to create thriving, active parks that give our families safe places for their kids to play, but that means we need a real financial commitment for increased and improved recreational amenities in our parks. Finally, I would like to comment on the Community Assistance Program, or CAP. I believe that this year's financial commitment and policy vision for CAP are extremely important improvements for our city. I am supportive of the CAP program's continued development within our fire department. I know that the Phoenix Fire Department offers employees the good pay and benefits that we should demand for jobs as important as CAP. I do, however, hope that we can continue to work towards the creation of a public health office that in the future would focus on best practices and the overall well-being of our residents. As the fifth-largest city in the country, I think it's incredibly important that we continue to provide resources to the public while also having the ability to adapt to the changing needs surrounding public health. It's been, you know, it's been an incredible year. I think that we've rolled with the punches, and I think as a council, we've acted very thorough, and we've taken the advice of the health professionals very serious, and hopefully we'll get a lot more people to get vaccinated in the next couple of months. But a lot of variants keep coming up, and I am thankful for all the work that everyone is doing and how we've pulled together to make things happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll next go to Councilwoman Ansari.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, reflecting upon the last year, it's very impressive to see Phoenix not only delivering on the basics, but also going above and beyond to deliver bold new initiatives that will make us more sustainable, more thoughtful, and a more just city. You know, I think the pandemic brought to light deep inequities in our city, and while I do believe we're on the right path to address those inequities, the important thing is to start. We can and will do more. I'm very, very excited about the Office of Heat Response and Mitigation, and I was very pleased that there were so many public comments in support of this. I think our residents recognize the increasing threat of the climate crisis in Phoenix, and I'm also very excited about the $15 million investment in the Community Assistance Program to provide 24-hour on-scene crisis intervention. With our dollars, I think we're saying mental health needs to be addressed, affordable housing is a growing crisis, our water supply needs to be protected, and we need to have a game plan to combat the climate crisis. In District 7, I'm very pleased that in this revised budget, we are delivering two new parks, one in the Levine area and one in Tolleson that neighbors have been waiting 20 years for. I heard about this repeatedly during the campaign and since taking office, and it's just very exciting that this is happening in this budget process. Want to give a big shout out to Linda Abeg, who is a District 8 resident, but she's been the lead organizer and engaging resident in support of these parks, and I'm very, very excited about that. On transit, I also want to mention that I'm thrilled that the Transportation Department is exploring a response to the comments made by the CISA Puerta Neighborhood Association, and that there will be two transportation, there will be a study in potentially providing a circulator bus with new routes to service these areas, which is fantastic. a circulator bus with new routes to service these areas, which is fantastic. So on that, thank you, Mayor, and I'm thrilled about this new budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I'm really happy to see our employees getting a raise. They certainly worked hard in the last couple of years, and I feel we're very fortunate because there's other parts of the country where cities were struggling and actually had to lay off employees. So I just feel blessed that we're able to help our employees. I also am very happy to see the additional funding for projects to be included in the Comprehensive Roadway Safety Action Plan. As you know, pedestrian safety, vehicular safety is of the utmost importance to me, and as we continue to find better ways to protect the public when using our roads, I'm all for it. Affordable housing continues to be a problem in our city, and I'm so, I applaud that we're hiring a special projects administrator to help us address those issues. And I'm also very excited about our Community Assistance Program. I know we're passionate after other programs in the United States, and I have a lot of hope that this is going to help with our issues, especially with mental illness and addiction. Also, homelessness continues to be a problem, and adding positions in the Human Services Department to create a homeless advocate workforce specialist is, I think, of a great need, and I'm happy to see that. I really am a big fan of our cool pavement technology, and I hope to see more of that on our roads. It seems to be having some positive effects, and so I hope we can continue that. And lastly, although it's a small little bit of money, I'm very excited to see funding added for the Fast Track Cities Initiative. I know Councilwoman Pastor and I worked very hard on this. This was a little mission of ours, and so I'm glad to see that we're getting some funding. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll go to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So last year was the first budget cycle that I was in office, but then the pandemic hit, so it kind of took away our opportunity last year to engage with the residents in our district and the city. And so I'm glad this year was a little different, and we were able to figure it out. I tried to attend as many budget hearings as possible, and even organized a couple of budget hearings ourselves with the refugee community and a collection of nonprofits to try to get folks' voices and opinions of this. I say this a lot, but I think it's always worth repeating, this budget is a moral document. The month of feedback that was given to us as a city, I think, also gives us an insight into the value shifts of some of our members of our community. The first topic I heard a lot of mentions about was definitely opposition to additional funding for police. Many of those same people that advocated for reallocation of the other resources specifically for services of substance abuse or rehabilitation centers, parks, and so on. I was a little disappointed to read in our agenda for today that it would require City Council direction for staff to look into the possibility of providing these types of services. I think the need is clear, and the least we can do is look into the possibility or having the conversation of putting, without putting additional barriers, like waiting for the council to tell us what we already know and that there's a need. The second topic, and I think a couple of folks mentioned this, that we heard, that we saw kind of get the most support, was civilian-only response for mental health and crisis responses for service, and that was the CAP program. This conversation has been happening for a long time, but those that came out in support of this program also told us that the program could or should have more funding, and that there's a need and an expectation to have a deep community engagement as we develop the policies. One of the concerns was it living under the fire department. I think it's a good place to start, and we voiced that, but I think it's important for us to add some sort of official body, whether it's an ad hoc or something similar that's happening with the homeless task force now, to make sure that we're addressing those needs and that we have a timeline for this potential department to move on its own. Despite, again, the majority of participants in the cycle calling for a reduction in police spending, we still, we're still looking at a draft budget that has a significant increase for the police department. Police department that can now add or is going to have more funding because of the legalization of recreational marijuana, a police department that still has hundreds of sworn positions that are not filled. And so I think operations should dictate budget. And since we're seeing programs like this new CAP program that can potentially take, you know, 20,000 calls off of their hands, we should be looking at what this, these funds could be used for. I think we're spending about 600 million of our general fund on police, and so we look at that call reduction, even if it's 3%, we're talking about $18 million or $15 million that can go to other programs. I also just heard a lot of additional folks asking for parks and recreation. Councilwoman Ansari mentioned Linda Abeg and the folks at 55th Avenue and Samantha Way, who did an amazing job, an increase in arts and culture, and a lot of support for some of the new offices that we've put forth. The Office of Heat Response and Mitigation, I think, is a huge step forward as Phoenix continues to obviously get hotter and we see people suffering, especially those without homes. I think that's a great step forward. The Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and the Public Health Expert, I think those two in particular are really important, especially from the lessons we learned in this pandemic. I think unfortunately, we had to make a lot of decisions in the last year that I wish we would have had those lenses present, whether it was allocating funds and making sure that we're being equitable about it, or obviously, public health decisions that we ended up making with what I believe not all the information we needed. I know we tried our best to engage folks, and we're saying we engaged about 1,000 folks, but if you actually look at the number of people that called, that were present in repeated hearings, I would put the number around 500. I know we tried our hardest. I know it was difficult to tap into community during the pandemic, but we're talking about, we spoke to maybe 500 people in a city of 1.6 billion, so I think we should still continue to strive to talk to more folks. I have questions, but I think it'd probably be best if we save them to after public comments. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff. I know it's a lot of work, and there's a lot of us and diverse opinions, but I'm grateful for large parts of this budget and the way we're moving, but again, still have concerns about raising funds to a police department that this year, even more than other years, has proven to not be accountable or to have the best interests of the people. Thank you.
We will go next to Councilwoman Pastor and then Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you. First, I would like to thank the staff for all the hard work on this budget. It's always an ongoing process, starting from February all the way to July, and we will continue to be talking about this budget. I'm also grateful for the work of my colleagues and the way we administered CARES funding, which allowed us to be able to enjoy a surplus this time around. One of the key things that I'm happy to see, that with the surplus, we can compensate and invest in our city employees, and I will say that again, invest in our city employees after not being able to give them a raise in years. The employees of the City of Phoenix are really the foundation to the great city we all love and we serve, so I'm very appreciative of that. I'm also excited to see an investment for the Veterans Navigator. I know there has been a need, and I'm happy that with this new hire, we can better serve our veterans who have sacrificed so much for us, so I'm appreciative. And then our Community Assistance Program. As for the Community Assistance Program, I think we're off to a great start. I am proud that we are prioritizing this program and funding from the general fund to expand the current program and build upon it. I think the key will be to continue to engage the community and, more importantly, mental health experts to guide us. The creation of the Request for Proposal Process Mapping and developing measurable performance metrics are critical. Lastly, I would also want to consider a telemed platform with the Community Assistance Program. Finally, after serving four years on Fast Track Cities Ad Hoc Committee, I'm glad to see funding for the Fast Track Cities Initiative to increase resources and information for residents with HIV and AIDS. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I also want to thank the City Council for all their hard work in this last year under COVID conditions, and more importantly, the city staff that has worked so hard to ensure the safety of our citizens during this last year. So I am very pleased to see the significant investment in their salaries and benefits for this year. In addition, I am also thankful for the funds that we're going to be able to provide to bring back College Depot, to assist veterans, as well as our small businesses that were hit very hard during the pandemic. I would finally like to say that I am in favor of allocating the $15 million to expand our existing community assistance program as outlined, with a focus on finding qualified professionals who are trained and licensed to work with individuals experiencing mental illness or crisis. As we establish this model for this program, it's important to listen and involve the mental health professionals who've dedicated many years of training and intervention and in counseling. Their expertise and experience will be beneficial in helping those with mental illness navigate the system so they can be proactive in the treatment and management of their illness. In 2016, we had about 3,000 calls that, or actually, last year, we had about 3,000 calls, but in 2016, barely 20% of our officers had this crisis intervention training. So it will be wonderful for our citizens to have folks who can be first responders that have the training and allow our officers to go back to responding to calls that involve crime and are able to protect our citizens. So thank you very much to Jeff Barton and to Amber for this budget.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ansari.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I just wanted to ask a question of Jeff. All right. So I know, you know, echoing what Councilmember Garcia said, there are many folks in the community who have called and many protesting outside right now who have called for an increased investment in community, and also when it comes to the CAP program, hoping that this will be not under any public safety department. I know in the trial budget, you mentioned, this was actually mentioned that, you know, potentially this could, this program would start under the fire department, potentially it could be moved one day, so I just wanted to get a better understanding of what you think that timeline could look like, and, you know, just how you see that process moving forward in the next couple of years. Thank you.
Sure. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Ansari, that's an excellent question. I think the first thing I would orient you to is the complete rollout of the Community Assistance Program expansion is essentially an 18- to 24-month period. So the first phase in our process is really looking at the program as it exists now, and that's a program that's been in existence since 1995, you know, and they take in excess of 6,000-plus calls a year, and they have about 1,500 to 2,000 calls that go unanswered every year. That program is largely based on grant-funded positions and volunteers, and so the first phase of our program is really building that program, that platform, up to be able to handle the current volume of calls, as well as slowly start to transition calls from the police department for these calls that they're not equipped to handle over into that group. Then the second phase of the program is really about getting that private provider to actually serve as those behavioral health units. But to do that and to do this process well, we plan to engage a third-party consultant to help us do a complete process mapping, to help us identify best practices, to put those into place, and as well as engaging our community to make sure that the program that we're planning to stand up makes sense. Now, in terms of moving the program, that, to me, is a longer-term strategy. That's something that we evaluate once the program is fully operational, and after we've really had a chance to evaluate the program, you don't want to move something just for the sake of moving it. I think we have to move it when the data tells us that it needs to be moved, and if we think there's going to be a significant gain in moving that program from one function to another. Again, this program has operated autonomously out of the fire department since 95, and we've not really seen any issues. But again, we hear the sentiment of the community, and we will be responsive to that, but we want to do that methodically and responsibly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor.
So my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we have 40 currently Crisis Intervention or Crisis Response Team, and my understanding is that 12 are funded from the general fund, and then 28 are currently operating off of grant money. And so what we want to do is solidify and anchor basically the 28 that are currently operating off the grant. In addition to the other...
Councilwoman Pastor, that is correct. The program currently, as it stands, has about 40 FTE, about 12 in change are our general fund. The remaining 20-plus are funded through grants, which kind of fluctuates year over year. It's an unsteady stream of revenue, and we want to make sure that we have a steady stream of revenue, that we don't have to worry about fluctuations year over year.
And then about approximately 102, or maybe 130, will additional people will be placed?
Correct. The total complement of this built-out program is in excess of 130 positions.
Okay. And so we're just basically, we know that this program works, we know that it's, we need it due to call volume. As we move forward, what I would really caution, and I think we will have a pretty much a way or a compliment or directive on how we move forward, on as you talk about the third party, I'm not necessarily concerned, but I really want to caution in the third party because I really want the third party to also know our community, and if they're just looking at metrics and data, then that's great, but there are elements in this piece that I feel are two different elements, and one is really a behavioral health piece that, and a mental, that is really truly for the community, and then there's another piece where there is also a behavioral health, mental, there's a nonviolent and a violent situation. And so I think as we start, and I know these are the weeds, but I want to talk about at a high level, yet weeds, how we map that out, which I agree with the process mapping, and how do we serve all of our community. I think NOCAP has some ideas that are, that we can implement and we can look at. I do strongly feel that we do have to look at where this program lands and the possibility, I was told, where it was in the human services area, human resource area, or possibly, maybe it lands in the public health area if we build up a public health piece, and there's two different strands in there, but I do think we need to listen to the community and see where we can adjust and modify and make this program a national program and successful. make this program a national program and successful for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. We heard, I think there's over 200 comments of folks being critical of the 75 civilian positions we're adding to the Police Department. We know there's going to be some reduction in need because of the legalization of marijuana and, you know, there's some other positions that still available that they haven't been able to hire for. Could some of these positions, and that was some of the questions that were asked, could some of these positions live under a potential Office of Accountability and Transparency? Or could they live under, like the reporting, could it live under other places or other departments, whether the City Clerk's Office or so on? Is there a potential for these 75 positions to have or in the future live in other places?
Councilman Garcia, I think that's also another excellent question. I think for me to give you a complete affirmative answer one way or the other would be kind of inappropriate right now. I think we could evaluate that. I think you do raise a good question on the public records and I know that's something that we've looked at before. And I can tell you that some of the challenges that that does present is just from having, these individuals would have to have access to public safety databases, in particular the CGIS database. And having access to the CGIS database requires that these individuals go through a certain process that would include up to and possibly a background check, polygraph as well. And so those are things that we have to evaluate whether or not they make sense to live outside of the department. But again, I'm not saying yes, I'm not saying no, but we can evaluate that and see if some of those make sense. I will tell you that the Police Department, you know, as far as whether or not they can handle absorbing these positions, if you go back in time, '07, '08, even 2010, 2015, when we stopped hiring police officers in the First Great Recession, the Police Department is down-staffing from a filled perspective as well as an authorized perspective. I can tell you that on a sworn perspective, they're down about 400 positions. On the civilian side, they're down about 300 positions. So in effect, they have been to some extent largely defunded because our population has continued to increase as well as our calls for service have increased. If I compare their budget for next year compared to the '07, '08 budget, it's also, if I take out the pension increase and I take out the compensation increases and the supplementals that we're talking about today, the Police Department budget is less next year than it was in '07, '08. So again, you may not see it, but again, we have made significant reductions to the Police Department.
And I mentioned the legalization of marijuana and I know we don't know exactly what that's going to look like. Is there a potential with those funds, because they're allocated to already be resourced for police, would that increase our general funding potentially in the future as that money comes in?
Yeah, it's hard for us to determine right now, Councilman, what the increase is going to be. The actual estimates are all over the place in terms of what we think that's going to bring in. As far as our latest estimates, we're somewhere in the 22 to 25 million dollar range. And some of that is earmarked for specific purposes, as you well know, and then there's a small incremental part that would not be. But I think the conversation about what to do with marijuana revenues is a broader conversation that we plan to have with the council at a later date.
We had a lot of comments around transportation and I know last year for a little bit because of the pandemic, we were unable to collect fees. And so something that we didn't really address this year but looking for in the future, what are other solutions that you all thought about or ways that we can support in transportation? I know some folks were asking for circulators, others were literally asking for potential free transportation for certain populations. I know we have a whole other conversation with ARPA moving forward, but is this something that in the future, you know, have we addressed this in the past and how can we address some of the transportation needs?
Mayor, members of council, Councilman Garcia, I believe there's a section in our report that addresses the transit issues and in some extent that we can expand routes, expand the circulators for those free services. As far as the ARPA funds, that is part of a larger discussion that we plan to have with you. One thing I have to caution you on, and you know, this is what I constantly do, we cannot replace or cut revenue to a particular entity or unit of government and then replace that revenue with ARPA funds. We can't do that. But there may be opportunities using the ARPA funds to offer subsidies to individuals to pay for transit services because at the end of the day, transit is a service that requires revenue to run because ultimately it's a service-based industry and we have to pay our employees. So again, we have to have revenues coming in. So there may be a way for us to offer subsidies to individuals for a period of time using the ARPA funds, but that is something again that we can discuss with you when we come back with that larger plan for ARPA.
Two more. I know there's things we didn't do in the past that we now do, like supporting veterans, food distribution, those sorts of things. There was a lot of comments around addiction and kind of the opioid epidemic and how we can support as a city. Similar question to the previous one, how can we do that? And also, you know, is it public partner, public-private partnerships? Is it that as a city we could do more? And what are the legal parameters that were kind of referred to in the agenda?
Councilman Garcia, these are all excellent questions. I think as far as the rehabilitation centers and things like that, that requires licensing that the city does not actually possess. So I think the easiest way for us to participate in that space is to really engage and contract with individuals and companies that have that licensing. So we can use the ARPA funds, especially if we can make a connection to COVID, and I think we can, that we could provide possibly operating revenues to those types of businesses that would provide that service and operate those facilities on behalf of the city. However, just noting that the ARPA funds are temporary in nature. They only run through December 31st, 2024. So if the plan is that the city would be perpetually engaging and funding those operations, we would need to find replacement resources once those funds expire.
Thank you. The last thing, and I think this is more for you, Ed. You know, we had a lot of comments about the increases. I think a lot of us are excited about folks getting increases. But a lot of that conversation happened and we've been getting criticized for specifically the plea bargaining being behind closed doors. And we had this question a couple of times in the forums we sat together. Can you explain a little bit of why it is those happen, kind of as is being said, closed doors? And I think you mentioned this last time, but what would we have to do for those conversations to be public?
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, we had several comments on that in the budget hearings about the practice of negotiating labor contracts in, outside of a public meeting. I think the main thing is, is most contracts are negotiated outside of the public view because that's when you're able to have open, honest dialogue about specific issues where people can explore ideas without being worried that just even exploring an idea is going to be held against them at the end of the conversation. So conducting a labor negotiation in a public setting would dramatically change the dynamic of negotiations. That's neither good nor bad, it just is the fact of it. Our practice at the city for the last 40 years has been that those negotiations are conducted outside of a public meeting so that they have those opportunities for open dialogue. If the council were to direct management to conduct those meetings in public, we would have to do that. That would require some conversation with the labor groups as well, but ultimately the council can set the rules for how the negotiation is conducted.
Thank you. And I think the reason I bring that up is as we've had this conversation, majority of our budget goes to wages and then majority of our budget goes in the public safety police bucket. And so I think we've been, or personally, we've been getting asked a lot of questions of how we're making kind of these decisions behind closed doors. So I guess it's not just for you, but for my colleagues, I think it'd be good for us to explore. I know other cities have done it, such as Austin and others, but just asking you all to think about exploring a public venue for these negotiations.
Thank you. Any additional council member comments before we go to the public? All right. We are going to begin public comment. One of my favorite moments of this budget process was the strong support for a park on Samantha Way and people who came to our budget process to testify on a variety of topics not related to parks would occasionally end their comments by saying, "Get Asher Abeg his park." So we'll begin today's comments with Linda Abeg, who I, we are hoping to get Asher his park and she will be followed by John Altman and then our staff will call the members of the public following that. Linda, the floor is yours. Thank you for your advocacy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good afternoon. I am privileged to be here today representing many Levine residents that want to say thank you so much for the parks in this budget. We're celebrating that the public hearing process worked and that the budget was adjusted to reflect comments made by our residents. We all know how important outdoor space is for the health and success of our community. We're thrilled that in recognition of that and the immense growth in our area, that you've added 22 parks, sorry, two parks in Levine and one in neighboring Australia Village. These will benefit so many people. As the Vice Chair of the Levine Village Planning Committee, I'd also like to highlight that our committee has identified the need for parks as one of our top priorities for several years. Thank you for getting started down that path. I've been organizing community efforts for our parks for several years now and I'd like to recognize how helpful and supportive the city has been during our advocacy, even in years when the answer was no. First, Vice Mayor Garcia, thank you for supporting us as soon as you took office. The way you prioritize listening to your constituents is so appreciated and key in the success of our advocacy. Thank you, Mayor Gallego and Mrs. Zucker for your personal attention and responses to Levine residents. Thank you also to Councilwoman Ansari. When I, not even a member of her district, reached out the morning after her election, she was immediately responsive and willing to meet with the community. And of course, a huge thank you to the Parks and Impact Week staff who have spent so much time assisting and educating our community over the years. Inga Simpia, Esther, Judy before she retired, Adam Miller and others, thanks so much. So for all of my Levine neighbors, thank you so much for addressing our needs for parks in the 2021, 2022 budget. And you mentioned Asher and he's right here and he wants to say thank you too.
Thank you. I really wanted the park.
Thank you, everyone.
And I think staff is going to call, but we'll go next to John Altman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Gallego, Council, I'm John Altman. I'm the Chairman of the City's Military Veterans Commission. I'm speaking to the Veteran Service Navigator Position in the budget. The position is in keeping with the recommendations made by the commission over the past year. It's a tremendous idea that the commissioners, myself applaud, and we're very grateful for that addition to the budget. You know, the city of Phoenix continues to lead in efforts to assist veterans, military members and their family, and this is just another one of those great steps. Just as a closing note on this Teacher Appreciation Day, I am my proud public educator and I stayed late to be in my classroom so I'd make sure I'd make this meeting. So I am speaking for my AP US History Classroom in the city of Phoenix at Paradise Valley High School. And this marks my fifth year and my third career now as a public educator and serving in federal troops, the teacher program. So it's a great day for teachers and for veterans and their assistance given to them by our great city. It is also a great day. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Our next speaker is Jeff Christian. Jeff, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. Yeah, I'm Jeff Christian. I'm a Realtor and I thank you, Mayor, and council people for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I'm very concerned about what I'm seeing throughout the country and in our own city, this war on police and defunding the police, which are already short-staffed to begin with. Now, as a citizen, I've dealt with the police on many occasions, on both sides of the table. I've worked with them. And when I was younger, I didn't like police because, you know, they were always going to give me a speeding ticket or whatever, but I deserved it. There's a reason that they're doing this thing. They're doing their job. Speaking of jobs, if anybody's had a job and your company, say, downsized or fired some people or restructured, you took on more work because now there's less people. And how did that make you feel? I bet you were frustrated because now you have way more work to do than your own job. And when you get that way, you might, I don't know, lash out or, you may lash out at your coworkers or family. Your family might suffer. You might lose your patience. You might make a mistake because you've got so much on your plate. Now, here's the problem with the police officers. They're hired from the human race, just like priests or teachers or bus drivers or anybody that you may respect. They're human and they're successful at making mistakes. And if there's anybody who thinks that we need to defund the police, they're either not grown up yet or they're watching too much television because not every cop out there is kneeling on people's necks. And in fact, I know quite the opposite. Most police that I know, they don't like arresting people and sending them to jail. They prefer to see people get better and rehabilitate and they celebrate the rehabilitation of people. In fact, they're not out trying, in fact, I know organizations that are not trying to, they're trying to find ways not to arrest people, but instead to create diversion programs or other programs to educate people. So the police care. They actually care about the community and the people within it. And all this garbage you hear about how police...
Our next speaker is PJ Dean. PJ, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Great, thank you. Mayor Gallego, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of the proposed budget, which will bring some much-needed funding and innovation to our city. For those of you who don't know me, my name is PJ Dean. I'm the elected Secretary of the United Phoenix Firefighters Association. I speak before you on behalf of the roughly 1,600 sworn men and women who've served the Phoenix Fire Department. Since 1936, my organization has been the voice of Phoenix firefighters who originate from diverse backgrounds, yet all share the same passion for protecting the public. We'd like to commend city staff and leadership for their dedicated work on a budget that accomplishes many things. First, it gives ourselves and our fellow city employees a fair and equitable labor agreement. The last two years have been a challenge, not only to maintain service delivery in times of profound growth, but also navigate the risks and unknowns of a global pandemic. For the city to recognize and reward our efforts meant a great deal to our members, so thank you. This budget also addresses two major issues we see the challenges of every day, homelessness and mental health. The funds, resources and programs from this budget will enable public safety to offer a more comprehensive service to our citizens. The second half of our comments, we'd like to address what were referenced in today's agenda as a significant number of public comments that criticized the structure of the CAP and indicated the desire to take its funding directly from the Police Department. These comments are some of the same ones we see frequently from individuals who subscribe to extreme views on policing and have an obvious disdain for law enforcement. Their intent of removing CAP from public safety agencies appears not to lie within a concern for the program's success, but as a means in which to chase in the Police Department. Whereas we can appreciate the emotion that is tied to these kinds of comments and we fully support the rights of people who wish to express them, a fringe and profound hatred for the police is not what should drive the management of a vital community program. The CAP should remain in public safety circles where its foundation, the CR program, has already enjoyed decades of success for our community. Going forward, if it's necessary for ourselves and our public safety affiliates to engage more in these meetings, to provide context and balance to the public commentary, then we will certainly arrange for that. Our residents deserve to benefit from a forum that gives a full perspective towards important issues as opposed to one narrow view.
Our next speaker is Ann Ender. Ann, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you. Mayor Gallego and council members, I do want to start by thanking Mr. Zucker and Mr. Barton and their team for a very comprehensive budget that does, in my opinion, address the needs of the city. You know, I've been a neighborhood leader for over five years now and during that time, I've had the privilege of working with other neighborhood leaders, many that you all know, that have made significant progress in reducing crime in their communities. And that progress is a result of collaboration with the Phoenix Police Department, working with our precincts at all levels, quarterly meetings with our commanders, CAOs, net squads to hone in on the crime that's having serious and significant impact on our neighborhoods. So as I listen to Vice Mayor and then all of the people that are commenting about taking funding away from the police... funding away from the police, I think that all that is going to do is make things even more difficult for those of us that are working diligently to have a safe community. Being able to hire candidates that are qualified and that have the drive and they have the initiative to be a police officer. You know, there's not that many that want to do that, that have that, that spark in them to want to be able to help their communities. So I, I challenge many of the protesters and the people that we've heard continuing to ask to defund the police, to go out and work with their police departments. Their neighborhoods don't feel safe. They need help. Work with them and help create public safety in those communities instead of spending the time trying to figure out how to break the whole system apart. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amy Esposito. Amy, are you on the line?
Hi, yes, I am. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a part of the Urban Heat and Tree and Shade Subcommittee under the Environmental Quality for Sustainability Commission, and I just want to say that we're really happy to be, well, I won't speak for everyone, but I know that we've been working really hard on heat resiliency and heat relief and you can hear from citizens that parks are very much needed and the, so we're really appreciative of the funding that is going to that. Obviously, we think services should be and resources provided to the pedestrian and the transportation. So it's just great to see that the budget is starting to reflect where we are as being in the bull's eye of climate change and look forward to the resources continuing to go towards, you know, our citizens in this fashion to make sure that we're prepared and livable for the future. So thank you for supporting those services and directing more funding. I think there's definitely room to grow in that area, but excited and happy and thankful. So thank you.
Our next speaker is AJ Marston. AJ, are you on the line?
Yes, thank you. I am AJ Marston. I live in D4. This is a good budget. There's funding for public safety, community building, crisis intervention, solid topics. There's funding for sustainability, arts and culture, youth and other quality of life aspects, fun topics. So let's ensure that this funding goes to sound practices. It's exciting to think about ideas, but it's not enough to think about the initiation of a program only. It's crucial to learn about outcomes of plans and policies a few years out. Like Mr. Barton said, let's learn because there are horrible stories of increased crime where police have been defunded and not supported. So let's focus on what does work. Preventing crime in neighborhoods works. Partnering with our police, utilizing all that our city has to offer, that works. Reducing crime might not be quick and it might not be easy, but it works. I also think that public safety should include the public working with the police as they help keep us safe. I know this works. I've helped others reduce crime and build up communities for over 15 years. I also want to continue advocating for gated alleys. Pull stats on alley break-ins, fires and dumping. Compare the cost of a full-on gating process with fire, police and city costs to manage alley crime. Also factor in victims, time and money. FYI, on March 18th, my husband's sword fighting gym was in the news for being burnt by an alley dumpster fire. His sword gym will reopen soon at a new location. So this benefit, this budget benefits us all. And it will help Phoenix move forward with public safety, services and sustainability, things that a progressive and livable city needs. Anyone can call on me to help reduce crime and build up their community. Councilwoman Pastor knows how to get ahold of me. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tabitha Myers. Tabitha, are you on the line?
I am, yes. Hi, thank you very much for having me and letting me speak. I am, this is by way background, I am vice chair of the Urban Heat Island and Tree and Shade Subcommittee. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of Trees Matter. I have worked and volunteered many hours for bringing more trees to the city of Phoenix. And so I just want to applaud all of you for the money allocated for the Office of Climate Change and Heat Readiness, and particularly the tree administrator position and the money allocated to plant more trees in Phoenix. As we know, it's, as Amy said, Phoenix is in the bull's eye of climate change. And this was a position that particularly with the tree administrator position, it was something that was promised by the city in the 2010 Tree and Shade Master Plan. And so I am so overjoyed to see it come to fruition in the budget. And then just as a side note, I'd like to thank you as well for the funding for the Affordable Housing and Homelessness Office, which is a, something that is personally important to me and something that I know that Phoenix is struggling with. So I would like to thank you all and that is all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carol Olson. Carol, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Mayor Gallego and members of the council, thank you very much for this opportunity to address you. I want to express my very strong support for the increased funding for the Community Assistance Program. I'm a local psychiatrist. I've been in practice here in the Phoenix area since 1992 and chair of the psychiatry department at Valleywise Health System for the past 16 years. As such, Valleywise has a great deal to do with providing care for the most seriously mentally ill members of our community. And as such, I've had a lot of experience with taking care of people who have been in encounters with police, which probably could have been better handled with licensed behavioral health providers in the community. The police are asked to do a great deal and many of the conditions that people are experiencing, which bring them to the attention of police, such as acute psychosis with very impaired judgment, people who are highly intoxicated on substances, people with cognitive disorders like dementia who are very confused. Many of those people have 911 called on them and many times the situation requires behavioral health training and also requires time that many times police officers do not have in order to bring it to a successful resolution without needing to use physical efforts to restrain someone. Often, we have patients coming to us after lengthy stays in jail where they were arrested when in the middle of an incident like that. And many times those individuals are not appropriate for a jail setting. Many times they never face their charges because they're not competent to stand trial on their charges. So it's, it's really, not only is it inhumane to the person, but also uses a great deal of public safety and criminal justice resources that are unnecessary. So I'm out of time and I will just say, thank you very much for the increased funding and I strongly support it.
Our next speaker is Mark Rodriguez. Mark, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me, guys?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Konnichiwa and hello, Mayor Kate Gallego and everybody at the city council. It's good to hear from you all guys again. And I know the budget is thing that you're talking about is kind of cool because parks and all the other communities need some. And hello, Yasemin Osari and Alabian, konnichiwa as well. It's because it's hello in Japanese because I like to speak Japan because I know it's not English. Because it's good to hear from all of you guys because I like the community here in Phoenix, Arizona, and I live in the District 7 in Levine. And then also because I was trying to live with everybody because the cities and the city and the community and all that stuff is because I'm very proud being, living Levine and then I hope everything is doing well. You, Mayor Kate Gallego, Yasemin Osari, Ann O'Brien, Deborah Stark, Buddy Juan Gato, Laura Pastor, Carlos Garcia is right there and everybody else. And I hope I will see you guys again. Have a great day. Tomo harigato. Sayonara.
Our next speaker is Diana Yasi Divine. Diana, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Diana Yasi Divine. I'm the CEO of Native American Connections located at 4520 North Central, North Central, and I'm here to talk about in support of the Community Assistance Program. Many of you know Native American Connections as a housing organization, homeless and affordable housing provider, but we've been a licensed state mental health and substance use provider since 1978. We provide both residential outpatient and telehealth, mental health and substance use services, and we're highly in support of the Community Assistance Program. There is a need for professional behavioral health counselors and peers to provide much-needed services within the community. I'm also the mother of an indigenous young man who was born deaf and at age 22 was diagnosed with a serious mental illness. And not only from my professional work, but as a work as a mother, the importance of having a trained professional and peers that have de-escalation, you know, knowledge and training and trauma-informed knowledge and training, working to make the community a safer place when there are the appropriate behavioral health and public safety issues that trained professionals can respond to. I think it will take best practices and data-driven decisions, working to determine which are the right responses for that Community Assistance Team Program. And that it will then eventually relieve those calls that the police department don't need to go out to that can really focus on the right public safety for each one, the police department and the Community Assistance Program. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Aragine. Stephanie, are you on the line?
Yes, she is. Yes, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Hi. Okay, hi, everyone. My name is Stephanie Aragine and I'm calling in opposition to the budget as it stands, specifically with the proposed cap program. We cannot accept it as it is and we can't say that this is progress for fixing the gaping problems with crisis response in the city. It is naive and neglectful to praise this proposed cap program for various reasons and I'll address some of them here. Number one, this cannot be an extension of the fire department. We know the police and fire work in tandem and we cannot expect the public to trust anything that comes out of either of these departments. Number two, for the program to benefit the people it is meant to serve and protect, this independent program needs to have a yearly recurring budget of $20 million, reallocated from the police department as it is taking calls away from the police and turning them over to social and medical professionals. Number three, as this program needs to start with an ad hoc committee as a foundation, if we're saying that eventually it will be developed at a later date, that is not community oversight or transparency. And number four, this budget still adds more funding to the police and it shows that this council supports, approves of and protects the violence at the hands of the Phoenix Police Department. I urge the council to reject and redraft this cap program and the proposed budget as is. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Blake Bernard. Blake, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Of course. Thank you for your time. I am calling. My name is Blake Bernard. I'm from South Phoenix, Arizona. I'm calling to oppose Phoenix City Council budget as it is currently proposed, specifically with the SEP program. A good community invests in their community and they listen to people that are speaking up in response to the actions that are happening around them. Last summer was one of those things and since then, a lot has changed among these communities and people have started to speak up and said that what is currently happening is not enough. And the CAP program does not reflect the needs that they have called for for this past year. So I am calling on the Phoenix City Council to oppose this budget and instead invest in the community. Last summer, I was ignorant to every single one of these issues that all of these people are stepping up to right now. And since then, I said, how can I be an ally? And they said, listen to our needs. When you sit back and you listen to the needs of community, the answers that they need are often different from what you think is best. And so going forward, we need to listen to them and actually hear these things that they're saying. Everything that has been going on this far has not done that. There is a group, the Neighborhood Organized Committee, literally, that has these. The Neighborhood Organized Crisis Assistance Program is a community-focused effort that loves their city and is trying to make it better. Let's listen to them and adjust accordingly. All the different things that need to be done have been clearly stated in many other budget meetings beforehand. So I'm just going to end with a sports reference and a sports analogy because I am a sports guy. All right? Madison Bumgarner was brought to the Diamondbacks to make them that playoff contender. He started off this season being told, use analytics to make yourself better. That is not how Madison Bumgarner pitches. He kept trying to use analytics to become a better pitcher and as a result, he had the worst start of his career this season. So guess what he did? He said, hey, guys, I need to change. I can't use analytics. I need to be who I need to be. As a result, he threw a no-hitter his next start. You guys can change. You guys can make that no-hitter happen. Please make it happen. Please listen to your community. The Neighborhood Organized Community Assistance Program is a way that we can help. Let's do it. Let's help our community. Let's listen and be allies. Thank you so much for your time and everyone have a wonderful day.
Our next speaker is Eric Brickley. Eric, are you on the line?
Yes, thank you to all that can hear me. About 600 people died on the street last year. A child was born in the corner of 9th Avenue in Madison on December 16th of 2020. You talk about data-driving decisions. Tens of thousands of people need support for mobility and mental health. They're left to languish in the increasing summer heat. When does that data point move the needle here? Okay? This isn't a situation without a solution. We want services and we want a fully funded transition services. How many people are acceptable to let die in the streets before this data drives us to make some big changes? Okay, we need immense rebuilding. We want a fully independent crisis response department. This is inherent to its success. This isn't a step along the way. This is something the community wants and has been spoken clearly about. All right? Let's save the city money. We want services. We do not want any more money going to police. If they want to raise, then get rid of some of the bloated workforce. I don't care if there's tasks, if there's people that haven't been hired. We don't want them. We want other services. You talk about preventing crime. How about we provide an avenue where people aren't incentivized to commit crime? We are growing more united as a community. If you do something amazing today, we will step up for you. We'll support you. Funding no cap and committing to housing all of our residents would show the city that you actually care to be the leaders you said you would be. We will step up to support you. The police budget of $750 million is like immense, right? And you're spending less than 1% of that on housing. It shows the city that you don't really care about our needs or you're in fear of the police union. Either way, if you step up for us, we'll support you. All right? We want more services. We want no cap, fully independent. We don't want anyone unhoused and we'd like to be taken care of with our own money. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Kaitlyn Clifford. Kaitlyn, are you on the line? Kaitlyn is not on the line. Our next speaker is Lucia Corral. Lucia, are you on the line?
Si, aqui estoy. Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Lucia Corral. Pertenezco a si se puede Neighborhood Association, Distrito 7, Estrella Village. Código postal 85043. Si se puede Neighborhood Association se opone al presupuesto del administrador de la ciudad de Phoenix. de la ciudad de Phoenix porque no incluyen y tampoco consideran la construcción de un centro comunitario en el suroeste de Phoenix, en el área de Estrella Village. Necesitamos un centro comunitario para fomentar la unión familiar e involucrar a los jóvenes y familias en general en actividades educativas físicas y artísticas, ya que de esta manera podemos lograr alejar a nuestros jóvenes de la drogadicción y el alcoholismo, manteniendolos ocupados en actividades productivas y al mismo tiempo lograr una comunidad segura y educada. Queremos saber si el Departamento de Parques y el Departamento de Planificación y Desarrollo de la ciudad de Phoenix han hecho un estudio que refleje el incremento de la población y vivienda en el suroeste de Phoenix, en el área de Estrella Village, ya que el centro comunitario más cercano nos queda a una distancia aproximada de cinco millas. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Lucia Corral, and I am from the Ciudad Puebla Neighborhood Association in the zip code area of 85043. And I oppose to what the city administration is considering because they're not taking into account that we have a need for a community center in the south area of Phoenix, which is specifically to Estrella Parkway or Estrella Village, I'm sorry. We needed to be able to foster family gatherings and for our youth to have other activities that are directed to education, artistic, and other physical activities in general that our community needs there. It also supports the, helps the youth to get away from drugs and alcohol. And that's what the community center, we believe, would encourage. We feel that, or what I would like to ask is, if the Planning and Development Department and the Parks Department have done adequate research and studies in the area, you would find that there is a growth and need. The nearest community center is five miles away, and we feel that if we had this, it would lead to a more productive and educated community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hava Derby. Hava, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Actually, I can hear myself in the feedback. I actually, I'm in full support of NOCAP. I am not in support of the budget as it stands now. I'd like to see full funding of NOCAP, 20 million from the police budget every year. How much money are we saving when police aren't answering nonviolent, noncriminal calls? Most of them. So we need to make this a fully-funded, separate department from police and fire. You've heard it all. I want to spend the last of my time, really, to address some of the callers that talk about how we hate police, that we don't understand how the police work. And since George Floyd's death, at least for me, I'm speaking for myself, I've paid attention to what's going on. I do not support the police and then go back to sleep into my neighborhood where I am protected. We've been paying attention to what's happening in brown and black communities, and they are being killed by police constantly, before a verdict, after a verdict, in Phoenix. Still, it's got to stop. The police need to be called only for criminal and dangerous situations. They don't need to be answering other calls. We need to protect our community. Please fully support NOCAP. Get it in the budget. We know it's going to be a bit of a process. That does not mean that it's not a fully possible, it's not even a possibility. This needs to happen to protect our communities and get killer cops off the streets. We don't hate cops. They just have a place, and it's not in our communities where people are having mental health crises, are having addiction issues. Somebody's strange on their lawn. The cops don't need to be called in these situations. Use your heads, people. This is an issue of safety, public safety. This NOCAP needs to be a separate department. So yes, earlier, one of the council people said that we need a public health department. NOCAP needs to be a separate department. This is a public health department that helps our communities and gets them out of danger. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eric Elmore. Eric, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Yes, I am a white, middle-aged man and a Phoenix native. I'm speaking in opposition to the current proposed budget and in favor of full funding of and compliance with all the demands put forth by NOCAP. Continued status quo and increased funding of the Phoenix PD is not structural balance, as stated by a council member at the beginning of the session. It is structural violence in its very essence. An acceptance of the current budget proposal and a simultaneous failure to adopt NOCAP's proposals would be overt acts of injustice and moral cowardice. Police in the U.S. kill more than 1,000 people every year. That's three human beings every single day. The Phoenix PD ranks as one of the top 10 deadliest police forces in the nation. The Arizona Central, an Arizona Central article in 2020 found that the Phoenix PD shoots another human being every five days. You all know this. Contrary to another council member's prior claim, you do not need more evidence to move funding away from the Phoenix PD. This is a claim used all too often to simply deny justice. The evidence is abundantly clear and has been for many years. NOCAP is, in fact, based on the evidence. By actively ignoring the community's demands for NOCAP, Phoenix City Council would not only be complicit in the violence the Phoenix PD wreaks on its most vulnerable citizens, it would be actively sanctioning this violence. The members of Phoenix City Council cannot claim ignorance or powerlessness, much less success or self-congratulations. You are all in a sacred position to not only promote community healing, trust, and well-being, but to literally save lives. This should weigh heavily on your individual and collective conscience. As fellow human beings, this should, without question or hesitation, force a rejection of the current budget in favor of all the proposals outlined by NOCAP. This will demand your courage. The current budget proposal as it stands is an immoral document. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cynthia Garcia. Cynthia, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Hi. So I am calling today in opposition of the budget. I've called them before. I'm an advocate for adults with developmental disabilities and serious mental illness. This cap program would not benefit those who are in crisis. Again, we need police not to respond to those in crisis. We need trained professionals to respond to those in crisis. We need a secure, long-term budget for this cap program, not just from the surplus. We need 20 million year-long, every year. And... Sorry, I'm getting emotional here. Yeah, so this program means a lot to me. I mean, we all know somebody who struggles with mental health. And the thought of having police show up to their door in, you know, these uniforms that you see out of video games is kind of a scary thought when you don't know if this person has, you know, a mental disorder or, you know, they're having a behavioral episode. There's not a one-type-fits-all for people who are in crisis. And this is why we need somebody who is trained in de-escalation. And again, you've heard this a million times, and it's the same thing over and over again. I support NOCAP. So you have a crisis program that, you know, it's projected, but it's not good enough. So vote no on this. It's not good for the community. I yield my time.
Our next speaker is Viridiana Hernandez. Viridiana, are you on the line?
For those who don't know, my name is Ramiz Job. I host the radio show called Civic Cyber on Power 98.3, and I am glad to support, I'm glad to support...
Viridiana, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. Yeah, I'm calling, hi, Viridiana Hernandez. I'm calling because there's people outside right now opposing this budget because this budget, again, continues to ignore community demands. This budget is not a reflection of what we heard in these budget hearings, unlike it was presented earlier. I was at more hearings than all of you. More hearings than you, Mayor Gallego. You didn't even go to one. And what we heard constantly in these meetings, over 200, 300, 400 people, including comments and on the phone and submitted online, that they're demanding a decrease to police funding. Some comments in support that was mentioned earlier, there was only 26 comments in support. And so what we're seeing is that you are not listening to community, and you're choosing to actively ignore what community is demanding. You cannot claim that this is a reflection of community needs, and you cannot continue to put this fake process that is going to continue to ignore. Stop wasting our time. You're not going to listen to us. Don't waste our time with all these meetings and asking for all this input if you're just going to ignore those demands. One example that we see in this budget is that, you know, you all allocated another position for the Pueblo Museum, which is great. There was only one person in this whole process that made a request for that. And you yet found money to allocate that. Yet people asked and demanded for you to figure out a way to support substance abuse, transportation issues. And all we hear from the city is, we can't do that. And so I hope that all of you, especially folks in District 4, 5, 7, and 8, who have been hit by COVID the hardest, who have been hit by racial inequity and racism and mass incarceration, for you all to echo your constituents' demands. People demanded for those 75 positions that are being added to the police department to be shifted to another department for free transportation. And I'm almost done. I'll wrap up. And also, what I heard right now is that for you all to open up the process for the MOU. So we're asking you all to echo your constituents' demands and direct the management to have these negotiations publicly.
Our next speaker is Chelsea Hickock. Chelsea, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
I'm calling in solidarity with Black and directly impacted leadership to demand that council does not approve this budget as is and increase the already bloated Phoenix police budget. It's honestly so hard to watch you all pat yourselves on the back for pushing through half-measures and assure yourselves that we're a fringe coalition. Negotiating with police has been hidden from the public, worked out behind closed doors, and there's no trust between the community and what council thinks of as public safety. We don't see that as safe for us. We know what keeps it safe, and it's definitely not the police. It's become impossible to trust that you all will do the right thing. But defunding the violent police department is the future we need, and we'll keep showing up to push you. It is egregious that COVID relief funds will go to cover police raises, essentially offering them what we've called an accountability bribe. The city of Phoenix should move $10 million from the Crime Suppression Squad to support funding for free transportation, rehab services, and programs like the Neighborhood Organized Cap Program, or NOCAP, not the one that has been created without input from the most directly impacted community care members. Reject this budget and defund the PPD. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sabrina Kernagis. Sabrina, are you on the line? Sabrina, are you on the line? We do not have audio for Sabrina. Our next speaker is Laurel Langmaid. Laurel, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
All right. Thank you for having me. I just want to say, well, I appreciate you adding to the Public Works and Street Transportation the money to clean up and sanitize the streets around the Human Services Center. That was on page 35. But it's a sad reflection, I think, of how our taxes have to be spent because the individuals that run the Andre House and the Human Services Center are not holding the people accountable that are defecating on the streets and putting garbage on there. It would be nice if they could be made accountable so that all this $949,000 didn't have to go for street cleaning. Whereas in contrast, for arts and culture, that's on page 36 and 37, there's only $200,000 allocated. So I hope that the city council and the mayor can proceed with your want for smaller shelters away from the Human Services Center because the mass of humanity that is around there is creating the problems of the trash and the need for the street cleaning. We also appreciate the police squad that's in the area. And anybody that wants to defund the police, they ought to see the work that the men and women that service around the HSE do for the people. They're not with guns out, blasted away. And it's probably one of the unsafest zones in the all of Phoenix. They need more police at night because we have to wait minutes, a long time, if we're having an issue. And to put myself in context, I'm a property owner at about 11th Avenue in Madison. I want to thank you for your time, and please make people accountable. I remember when I was in grade school, I blew a piece of paper off my milk straw, Mark Milk Parton straw. A teacher saw me, and she made me spend the recess cleaning up the cafeteria. If I can be made accountable for the trash those in and around that Human Service Center and Andre House can be too. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Benjamin Lewis. Benjamin, are you on the line?
I am on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Hi, I am here in opposition to the budget as it stands. We're talking about whether or not we can see the contract negotiated with the police. And we found out today that we just had to ask, so why aren't we doing these things that we can do to have some accountability with our police department? The police is complaining that they can't hire people, but they have such a bad reputation, nobody would want to work for them. It's not a money problem. It's a reputation problem. So I suppose a fairly libertarian solution. I propose that we take half of the budget away from the police department and put it into nonviolent community services. And then we'll get to choose, as a people, where we want to spend our, you know, our energy, calling the police or calling people that can actually help us without putting our neighbors in harm. One of the things that negotiating in silent has done for this budget, which is a very minor point, but man, it really irks me, is that we're paying for hundreds of hours of lobbying for Arizona state senators to criminalize protesting the police. And why am I, as a community member, why are we, as community members, paying the police to lobby against us? It's crazy. So please vote against this. We need a better budget. We can do much better than this. I really appreciate the time to speak and being heard, and, you know, I yield the rest of my time.
Our next speaker is Tina Luna. Tina, are you on the line?
Yeah, I sure am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Yeah, a lot of people said things that I was going to say. So I'll just... You know, the 15 million or 20 million that's being proposed, it's so inadequate that there's plenty in the rest of the budget to give, you know, to boost that up. But what I want to say is, you know, we're not cop haters. We know that they're human. Sería bueno si trataban a todas las personas a las que sirven con humanidad. Y ese es parte de lo que es nuestro problema. No lo hacen. Están, quiero decir, incluso con todo el dinero que reciben, todavía logran ser la fuerza policial más letal en la nación. Y luego después de los informes de ABC-15 que muestran la corrupción incontrolada y mentira y brutalidad, las personas que están hablando en favor de la policía, simplemente no están tratando de resaltar esos problemas. Lo que queremos es que esos problemas sean tratados. Y... El 25 de mayo de 2020, George Floyd fue matado. Pero había alguien más matado en Phoenix. Dion Johnson fue matado por DPS. Fue dejado en la calle para sangrar durante seis minutos. Su crimen, se duerme en su carro en la parte de la carretera del 101. Nadie sabe si estaba teniendo, ya sabes, si estaba teniendo un problema médico, si estaba teniendo... Quién sabe. Pero eso es de lo que estoy hablando. No fue tratado humanamente. No fue visto como humano. De todos modos, muchas gracias por permitirme hablar.
Nuestra siguiente oradora es Amy Maglio. Amy, ¿estás en la línea? Amy no está en la línea. Nuestra siguiente oradora es Samuel Merton. Samuel, ¿estás en la línea?
Estoy en línea. Sí.
Gracias. Por favor, proceda.
Opongo este presupuesto y tengo problemas con el financiamiento aumentado para el departamento de la policía. El departamento de la policía de Phoenix fue demostrado por ABC-15 que fue infiltrado por supremacistas blancos. Targetaron y mataron manifestantes en lugar de protegerlos. Pasaron la moneda congratulando el uno al otro por asaltar a los residentes de Phoenix. Dijeron que iban a disparar al señor, se le mintió su promesa. Ha habido datos factuales, hechos factuales de múltiples fuentes, que demuestran que el departamento es malgestado. No es un engaño, son hechos. Así que no puedo entender por qué el departamento daría más dinero sin que esto sea tratado. También necesitan más garantías sobre lo que nuestra ciudad está financiando en esta expansión del programa de capo. Estoy contenta de escuchar que ese diálogo está empezando a pasar. Así que, Jeff Gordon, has mencionado el actual capo que ha estado en funcionamiento desde 1995. Mientras que eso puede ser cierto, la información de investigación presupuestaria de la ciudad muestra que no ha sido exitoso. La importancia de que sea independiente y saliera del departamento de la policía tiene que ver con la confianza pública y la seguridad. Eso realmente debería ser suficiente y la única razón para que sea independiente. Si quieres ayudar a estos interesados, déjenlos confiar en lo que estás haciendo. Este programa no está siendo creado en una burbuja, está siendo creado en Phoenix, Arizona. Es el departamento de policía más violento aquí. La gente tiene miedo de la seguridad pública. Así que estas cosas deben ser habladas. También me gustaría prestar atención al hecho de que el escuchamiento de Mohamed Mahieman ha sido secretado del público recientemente. Yo decía que la ciudad quería, quería ser transparente y ayudar a los más votables a cubrir casos como el de Mohamed Mahieman.
Nuestra siguiente oradora es Jacob Raiford. Jacob, ¿estás en la línea?
También quería decir antes de que comenzara que Amy Maglio estaba, ya sabes, está disponible para hablar, pero por favor, empiece mi tiempo oficialmente. Solo quería decir buenas tardes al consejo de la ciudad, a todos los que están en la audiencia. Mi nombre es Jacob Raiford, defensor de NOCAP. Por supuesto, es una iniciativa que busca crear un departamento que aloje despachos de chequeo de la pobreza hasta lo que se categoriza como PPD, que es no violento, ya que se especializa en llamadas de abuso de sustancias además de despachos como crisis de ayuda a la salud y la comunidad despejada, ya sabes, departamento de asistencia a la crisis. Así que, por supuesto, estoy oponiendo este presupuesto, el capo es problemático y por favor, dé más dinero. Quiero desafiar a la ciudad a mirar hacia atrás en su punto de vista de honestidad y responsabilidad. Hoy, como Sam mencionó, el público fue prohibido de asistir al escuchamiento sobre un asesinato de 10 millones de dólares en un caso de litro de discapacidad contra la ciudad y diez de sus oficiales de policía a cargo de la familia de Mohamed Mahieman, un hombre negro de la demografía despejada que fue perfilado y finalmente matado por la policía por simplemente usar el baño. Quiero decir, sí, hay una oportunidad de citar y liberar un pequeño anuncio, pero fue sobre el baño. Esto es real. Así que nuestro equipo legal esperamos convencer al tribunal que un juicio judicial no es necesario para decidir este caso. Esa es nuestra ciudad, la misma ciudad que intenta tomar decisiones unilateral en materia de programa de asistencia a la crisis que impactaría a multitud de demografías, algunas de las cuales representaba a Mr. Mahieman. Se perfiló basado en eso. Así que este programa de asistencia a la comunidad que estás buscando proponer no es nuevo, sino en un intento de reinvigorar un programa fundamentalmente y históricamente ineficaz alojando un departamento altamente conservador. Quiero decir, acabamos de escuchar al repórter del departamento de la policía hacer un comentario pro policía a pesar del clima en el que estamos. Quiero decir, vamos. Quiero decir, recientemente compartí un entrevista con un miembro de este programa en KJZZ y este miembro citó la cultura pro policía y no vio esto como una entidad separada, sino más bien una asistencia a la policía. Así que, ¿cómo podría este programa, supuestamente basado en cahutes, proporcionar asistencia humanitaria y no biasada a las comunidades cuando llega con una perspectiva pro policía y encarcelamiento? Por eso es imperative que busquemos involucración y apoyo developmental de un comité adhoc formado de individuos de las demografías afectadas. Y una última cosa que quiero decir es que el capo no funciona, pero NOCAP lo hará. Así que busquen asistencia de la comunidad y alcanzarán los objetivos que estamos buscando como comunidad. Gracias.
Nuestra siguiente oradora es Amy Maglio. Amy, ¿estás en la línea?
Sí, ¿puedes escucharme?
Sí, gracias. Por favor, proceda.
Así que Amy con NOCAP y GLP. En la página tres del informe de investigación del gerente de la ciudad que fue emitido en diciembre de 2020, la ciudad evalúa su actual capo dirigido por el departamento de la policía y escribe que en 2019, el tiempo de respuesta promedio, incluso cuando las unidades estuvieran disponibles, era 39 minutos. La ciudad sigue escribiendo en ese informe en la página 14 que esta inadecuación y otros fracasos son debido a la falta de financiación adecuada. ¿Por qué entonces, en el informe actual del gerente de la ciudad, solo empiezan con 15 millones? El 3% de las llamadas desde la policía requiere al menos el 3% del presupuesto, lo cual es más cerca de 20 millones. Si ya saben que el financiamiento inadecuado lleva a tiempos horribles de respuesta hasta el punto que lo incluyó en el informe de investigación dado a ustedes, ya saben que punto A, 15 millones, no es suficiente. El programa debe ser 20 millones por año, o debes votar no. En el mismo informe de investigación del departamento de presupuesto y de investigación de la ciudad, adhesión A, las ocho ciudades que fueron estudiadas incluyen el primer y más exitoso programa que ha estado en marcha desde 1989, cahutes. Este programa, como Portland, como Austin, como los demás cinco ciudades que estudiaron, tenía intereses de la comunidad involucrado en la legislatura y el proceso de elaboración. Cuando NOCAP consiguió a Tim de Whitebird Cahuhtz para hablar con nosotros en la ciudad, Tim dijo que la razón número uno de las ciudades fallan, y muchas fallan, es porque falta la participación de los intereses y falta la confianza de la comunidad en el programa. Punto B, si no hay ordenanza para seguir con esto, estableciendo un comité adhoc de supervisión, este capo es como fallado como el que existe en el departamento de la policía hoy. Supervisión de la comunidad o votar no. Por último y lo más importante, somos conscientes de que la ciudad ha solicitado que se encierre el caso de Mohamed Mahieman Jr. Está usando un abogado externo, está tratando de hacer que el caso se pronuncie y como resultado están siendo acusados por un miembro de la familia. Este es exactamente el tipo de caso que necesitaba asistencia a la crisis, no a las copas. Así que mientras se están patando en la espalda por construir este capo, están agujereando el muro Mohamed Mahieman Jr., como lo hicieron con el desafío de la moneda nazi y los grabaciones de la cámara de cárcel TMZ. Quiero decir, no tengo palabras, así que aporto mi tiempo.
Nuestra siguiente oradora es Suchil Rao. Suchil, ¿estás en la línea? Suchil no está en la línea. Nuestra siguiente oradora es Nancy Ibarra. Nancy, ¿estás en la línea?
Sí.
Gracias. Por favor, proceda.
¿Me puedes escuchar? Buenas tardes. Buenas tardes, señora Ibarra. Habla, interpreta. Solo quiero pedirle, por favor, que... Solo haga, por ejemplo, unas dos horas. Después de cada dos oraciones, haga una breve pausa para permitirme interpretarle. Está bien. Gracias. Adelante. Mi nombre es Nancy Ibarra y pertenezco a Si Se Puede Neighborhood Association. Sí, mi nombre es Nancy Ibarra y pertenezco a la Si Se Puede Neighborhood Association. En el distrito siete, en la zona de Estrella Village, con el código postal 85043. En el distrito siete, Estrella Village, con el código ZIP Code 85043. Gracias por la oportunidad que me dan de expresar una de las necesidades que tiene mi comunidad. Gracias por darme la oportunidad de expresar una de las, algunas de las necesidades o necesidades que mi comunidad tiene. Que es contar con un circulador para poder así transportarnos a nuestro trabajo, hospitales, colegios y lugares donde vendan comida saludable. Lo cual es poder tener un circulador de autobuses que nos pueda llevar a trabajar, a nuestras escuelas, a nuestros hospitales y supermercados para que podamos comprar comida saludable. Ya que en esta área estos servicios no están cerca, contamos con el transporte público, pero un circulador nos facilitaría desplazarnos a dichos lugares con mayor facilidad. No tenemos eso en este momento, pero tenemos transporte. Sin embargo, si tuviéramos un circulador de autobuses, podríamos viajar con más facilidad a los lugares respectivos que mencioné. También me gustaría abogar por un centro comunitario porque nuestra comunidad quiere poder seguir educándose y preparándose para un mejor futuro. Y también me gustaría tener un centro de comunidad que ayudara a educar a la comunidad para poder, para poder tener un futuro más brillante. Espero tener en cuenta nuestras necesidades y poder trabajar juntos. Esperamos que tengas en cuenta lo que expresamos en relación con nuestras necesidades en nuestra comunidad y esperamos trabajar juntos. Gracias. Gracias.
Nuestra siguiente oradora es Thomas McElwicks. Thomas, ¿estás en la línea?
Sí, ¿puedes escucharme?
Sí, gracias. Por favor, proceda.
Bien, genial. Así que, gracias por escucharme. Y lo primero que me gustaría decir es que estoy en oposición al presupuesto como está. Tengo neutral en mi solicitud de solicitud de información. Y mientras he escuchado los puntos de la gente, bueno, mientras he escuchado más detalles sobre el presupuesto, me siento fuertemente, fuertemente en oposición al presupuesto como está. Eso dicho, escuché a la tercera oradora, que presentó un punto realmente interesante que quiero continuar con su analogía. Dijo que cuando su negocio se reduce y se hace cargo de las tareas de dos o tres personas, tienes esta tendencia de estar estresado y enfadado y hacer errores. Y eso es cierto, y la policía es humana. Pero cuando hacen errores, es letal. Costan a la gente sus vidas. Así que continuando con esa analogía, ¿cuán maravilloso sería sentirse sin tener que hacer las tareas de dos o tres personas y centrarme en el único trabajo que estoy allí? Así que eso es parte del razonamiento para este programa de NOCAP porque toma la presión del policía que ya ha pedido hacer demasiado y no lo están haciendo bien. Además, el tiempo y el dinero y la energía ahorrados por el NOCAP, y estoy diciendo NOCAP aquí porque apoyo el programa de NOCAP, no el programa de capa como está. El tiempo y la energía y el dinero ahorrados con un programa como NOCAP deberían ser tomados del presupuesto de la policía. Tiene sentido porque podemos financiar este programa basado en los ahorros que estamos obteniendo de otro programa. La última cosa que diré es que totalmente apoyo las demandas de los defensores de NOCAP en términos de 20 millones del presupuesto de la policía cada año, poniendo este programa bajo la supervisión de la Diputación de Salud pública y, además, apoyo abrir el proceso de negociación de la policía, o el proceso de negociación de contrato para el público. Gracias.
Nuestra siguiente oradora es Brenda Montoya. Brenda, ¿estás en la línea?
Sí, estoy aquí. Sí, estoy aquí. Brenda, habla, interpreta. Le pido solo, por favor, que después de cada dos oraciones me haga una breve pausa para yo poder interpretarle. Está bien. Gracias, Brenda. Adelante. Mi nombre es Brenda Montoya y pertenezco a Si Se Puede Neighborhood Association, Distrito siete, 85043, Código Postal. Si Se Puede Neighborhood Association revisó el reporte y nos refleja de dónde vienen los fondos para el circulador por lo que estamos abogando en Estrella Village. Mi nombre es Brenda Montoya. Estoy con la Neighborhood Association de la Ciudad de Estrella, con el distrito siete, en la zona de Estrella Village, ZIP Code 85043. Y en la vista de lo que se ha dicho hasta ahora, no vemos que haya ningún apoyo hacia el... Para poder cumplir la necesidad de los solicitos de circuladores de autobuses que hemos hecho antes. Queremos saber si los fondos para este proyecto van a salir del Departamento de Transporte. Queremos saber si los fondos que van a ir hacia este proyecto van a salir del Departamento de Transporte. Vivo en Estrella Village por más de 24 años y sé de cerca las necesidades de mi comunidad, en especial el Código Postal 85043. Y he estado viviendo en la zona de Estrella Village durante los últimos 24 años y soy consciente de todas las necesidades de la comunidad. Tener un circulador... Tener un centro comunitario dentro de Estrella Village sería de gran ayuda y apoyo a la comunidad. Por favor, consideren la construcción del centro. Muchas gracias. Y esas necesidades, una de las grandes necesidades que tenemos es tener un centro de comunidad en nuestro área y esperamos que ustedes, y pedimos que puedan tomar eso en consideración en el plan presupuestario. Gracias. También les doy las gracias a la concejal Yasmin Ansari por el apoyo a la comunidad y también a la concejal Carlos García y a todos en el Concilio de la Ciudad de Phoenix, a la concejal, a la mayor Gallegos. Muchas gracias. Y también quiero agradecer a todos en el consejo, incluyendo al miembro consejo Yasmin, consejo miembro Carlos y nuestro señor. Gracias.
Señor, Brenda fue nuestra última oradora en este tema. Gracias.
Hermosa gracias a los miembros del público que participaron. Volveremos a los comentarios y preguntas de miembro consejo. Empezaremos con la señora concejala Ansari.
Señor, mi pregunta es para el Departamento de Transporte. Así que Mario y Jesús están disponibles. Y solo voy a empezar como creo que están bajando.
Sí, están bajando.
Perfecto, gracias. Así que escuchamos a varios amigos esta noche de la Neighborhood Association y durante mi escuchamiento de presupuesto, y estoy segura de los escuchamientos de presupuesto antes de eso, se han pedido repetidamente por autobuses circulares en la ciudad de Estrella. Solo, sé que hay una parte en el presupuesto que habla de que ustedes estudiarán la expansión potencial de las rutas. ¿Podría hablar un poco más sobre lo que estás planeando hacer y cuál sería el cronograma para potencialmente, y con suerte conseguir estos autobuses circulares que se están pidiendo? Gracias.
Sí, gracias, señor y concejala Ansari. Esto es Mario Paniagua. Gracias por su pregunta para explicar qué es nuestra propuesta para responder a esa solicitud de necesidades de transmisión en ese área. Me gustaría pasarla a Jesús Sapián para explicar un poco más en detalle qué es la propuesta y algunos de esos elementos que mencionaste, como el cronograma y ese tipo de cosas. ¿Cuáles son los siguientes pasos? Jesús.
Gracias, Mario. Señor, concejala Ansari, gracias por la pregunta. En realidad hablamos con algunos de los miembros de la comunidad que hablaron en los escuchamientos de presupuesto para obtener una mejor comprensión de la ruta que están buscando. Y también recibimos una copia de la evaluación de la comunidad que hicieron. Y una de las cosas que encontramos es que la ruta que están recomendando a lo largo de McKinley, entre 59 y 67, es bastante estrecha en una área en particular, justo a la izquierda de los apartamentos de la señora que están buscando servir. Así que lo que haríamos en términos de pasos siguientes es que podríamos reunirnos con el grupo y su sugerencia de modificar el circulador de la ciudad Mary es algo que absolutamente podría, ya sabes, probablemente aportar el cambio más rápido. Trabajaríamos con ellos para potencialmente desarrollar tal vez dos o tres escenarios de ruta considerando ese obstáculo en la ruta que estaban buscando. Y luego podríamos analizar cuánto costaría, qué beneficiaría el área que están buscando servir. Y luego una de las cosas que también mencionaría es cuánto puede tardar en obtener vehículos porque lo que originalmente hicimos, concejala, es analizar su recomendación entre 59 y 67 en McKinley. Esa es la primera cosa que miramos. That's the first thing we looked at. But then we went out into the field and we found that one street that's quite narrow and is not conducive to sending buses through. But in looking at the one modification that they were looking at, we would require at least two new vehicles to add to that route. And one of the things that I do want to let you know is that in the vehicle industry as well as the onboard communications industry, both are being affected by the semiconductor shortage. And so just to get vehicles is probably about an eighth month timeframe. But what we can do in that meanwhile is meet with the community members, look at the community assets that they're looking to service, and then again, come up with a few potential routing options and then move forward from there.
Thank you so much. Just want to say that I really appreciate you doing that. I'll also be meeting with the group tomorrow and am eager to help with this in any way possible. So thank you for making it a priority.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Pastore.
Jesus, what I'm hearing is that there is the possibility, but it's really all in the timing and vehicles. Is it possible to develop a timeline as to when a circulator or circulators can get up in that area and provide that information to Yasemin so that she can talk to the community and begin the process? I think it's, I think it's very important for her and the community for that to happen. Obviously, the CISA Puede Neighborhood has been coming forward over many years and I think it's now that it needs to happen. So I guess my question is, what would be the total budget for that?
Mayor, to Councilwoman Pastore's question, the original estimate we came up with just to modify the routing based on the assessment that the community did was a little over 200,000, not including vehicles. Those circulator vehicles run about, if memory serves correct, about 100,000 apiece, and we would need about two. However, as I mentioned, that routing is hindered because of that narrow street. So the final cost will basically be dependent upon any of the scenarios that we're able to work out, working with Councilwoman Ansari's office as well as members of the community who we've already began discussions with. And we also touched base with Neighborhood Services Department staff who have been working closely with this group so that we can kind of start the dialogue of how do we go about meeting and addressing some of the transportation needs in that area.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is possibly $400,000, maybe 450,000 that is needed for this project?
I would say roughly estimating, based on what we know right now, yes, Councilwoman, that is, that's an approximate estimate. Again, that's based on the modification to the Mary that the community came up with, which will need to be modified.
Okay, but I guess I'm going to keep pushing because I'm assuming it's going to be 500,000 for this to come to fruition as you go through the process. And what I'm hearing is so that it can, the reason why I'm pushing is because it's, it's, we know how the budget operates. And so I think we're, I think what I'm trying to say is this, this needs to move forward, how it moves forward and embedded in the budget process for next year. But all the details and pieces need to begin so that it can come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Do we have any additional council member comments? Seeing none, thank you for your participation. We are adjourned.